Sir, and I'll call to order the April 22nd, 2020 meeting of the Regular Board of Education. And we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, which we have here. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have to start off with the approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes. I do think that we will have quite the discussion for our first topic. But under that, I don't believe there's any other changes.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay, Karen, we're gonna have to undo the unmuting. Don't forget about that.
Right. Okay.
Are you taking a vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Dana? Oh, she has a thing. Rini?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And Griffin's on. Look at that.
She's there.
Griffin, we're just approving the agenda as is. No changes. Well, maybe she can't hear me quite yet.
Christine, can you hear us? Nope. Did she just disappear?
She disappeared.
She just texted me and said she couldn't hear. Aye.
Okay, that will pass two minutes later. So we'll just go with what we have on here. I'd like to... Oh, she's back again. Can you hear Griffin? I don't believe she can hear. We have her figured out for this. Okay. We'll go to the approval of minutes for the April 8th, 2019. If there were any changes, we could raise your hand, or we can just go for the approval.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 8th, 2019, or 2020, right?
Yep.
So just as a reminder, make sure to say your name when you do that.
Oh, thanks, Will.
No problem, no problem.
Christina Plord, motion to approve the minutes from April 8th, 2020.
Rini B. Saw, second.
Discussion? Anyone for discussion of any changes? I don't see any hand raised. Is there a way that we can put our board members on the top of this list?
I, uh, I don't know for sure. I'll check into that.
Because it'd be easier to just scroll through who we have. Okay, Jacob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Griffin, are you with us?
Yes, finally. Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And I don't, I'm not missing anyone, so we don't have Tony tonight. Okay. So that passes as well. The four minutes as is are complete. Okay, we'll go to the public participation. We will have a two-minute time limit. We will have Jacob doing the time tonight. Just a reminder, he will raise his hand physically, so you can see that when you have 30 seconds left. And we will be able to discuss anything within the points of information. So we just need to raise hand, or what is that, star?
Star nine. If you're on the phone, star nine. Otherwise, in your participant window, you should be able to raise your hand.
You also need to give a verbal warning to people who are on the phone.
Okay.
Sure, I'll do that.
Let's just see. Minute?
Do we want to have a board member? Just Karen, can you raise your hand just to make sure that? So we're seeing? Yep.
I raised my hand.
Okay, so it works. So we're not, looks like we're not getting any, uh, any hands.
Oh, I just saw a little hand.
Oh, there are some hands.
Oh, that's, no, that's Karen.
Okay. All right then.
Okay.
Liz Costa, did you see Liz?
Oh, Liz. Let's go ahead and unmute her.
Yep. Go ahead, Liz.
Uh, it still shows she's muted.
She's, um...
Well, Dr. Willett, I think you have somebody in the waiting room, too.
Oh, okay, good. Good.
Okay. Okay, so Liz.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you for everything. Dr. Willett, I just have a couple of quick questions. Whether you can answer them or not, I don't know if Mark's available, but I'm wondering how much dollars are left over. I know you did a business retreat last month, or last meeting. But I'm wondering how many dollars and how many anticipated dollars will be left over in the budget? And then for the Board of Ed, last year, remind you that last year, there was a law voted that allows up to 2% of the fund to be left in, uh, whatever the fund is called, I forget, the 1%, it used to be called the 1%, now 2% fund. I would encourage you to use every last cent of that for next year. If there's even a cent left, I would encourage you to reach out to Pat, to Tim and Dan, and ask them for, to ask the governor to allow more than 2% to be rolled over into next year. And then furthermore, I know you're going to discuss the budget, but I would encourage you to spend every dime that you are given in that 1.54%. I know many parents are worried about their children needing extra help next year. And I would encourage you to have, allow the teachers to learn about one-to-one education while not under duress. So allow teachers to learn and then allow, by much, many more computers, to allow students to learn about one-to-one education in the proper way. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Would anyone else like to have two minutes from the public? You can just raise your hand, or do star nine if you're on the phone. Just give it another minute. Okay, well, we will move down to the correspondence. Tony usually handles this, and he said that he gave his information to Jacob. So Jacob, you could give us the report that Tony had given you.
All right. So we received six emails, including one just last, just about an hour ago. We received an email requesting that the governor not make the decision to cancel the remainder of the school year in early April. That writer stressed the need for strong advocacy for Talon students at the state decision-making level. We also received an email from the parent of both a Birch Grove and a TIS student praising the Lexia Core 5, Raz Kids and Reflex programs. Writer stresses the need for programs such as this after the current crisis passes. Also received an email asking for instructions on registering a child for kindergarten, and an email asking for information on Chromebook insurance. Also received an email praising Dr. Willett for his efforts for the community and the children. And we also received an email thanking Dr. Willett for his efforts and stressing that the budget that the Board of Education proposed a couple of months ago not be lowered past the 1.54% increase that was proposed.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the points of information. If you could, board members, please raise your hand, and I will call on you to...
Just a confirmation for, are everybody seeing the shared document here? I've shared the agenda. Can people see that? Just give me a quick nod. Okay, good. All right. Sorry about that.
No problem. No board members with any points of information. Just making sure. Oh, Jacob, you have to also raise your hand on the little thing, because then it pops you up.
Yeah, I've looked all over this computer. I'm using it on a different device. I can't find where to raise my hand on this one. I find it, I'll try, but I'm not sure. Anyway, just trying to respond to Ms. Costa's question. And we'll talk more about this later. We're gonna see what we can do with near-in funds and extra money that we may have. However, there are some strings attached to that as far as using it for one-time expenses and some other things that I won't get into right now. But there are a few strings attached to what we can do. But we're gonna do what we can to make sure that students are adequately prepared.
Thank you, Jacob. Anyone else? Okay. We will go to the Student Representatives Report from Fisher Thompson and Alexandra Costa. I don't know which one would like to go first, but Dr. Willett, if we could unmute both of them? Oh, see, they're on top. When you raise your hand, then that's how you get to the top of the...
Right. It will pop to the top if you raise your hand. So Fisher, you should be set.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Alexandra, is, is she?
Alexandra's there. Do you want me to, you all want to talk at the same time?
Yeah, we're gonna sort of trade on and off.
Yeah, you are both unmuted.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
I can go first. So we had our first, like, virtual student council meeting a few days ago. We're just kind of discussing what we can do through a virtual setting, focusing on a lot of mental health aspects that we are indefinitely postponing with Mental Health Week. We have another meeting tomorrow. So prom is obviously scheduled for the 15th, and a bunch of students, like, we understand that that's outside of the guidelines of what's being canceled right now, so we're just kind of wondering what was happening with that. Fisher, do you want to go?
Yeah, one, just a sprinkle of positivity. The Talon High School Environmental Science Class for Earth Day, Mr. Elliott teaches that one. He's, they're, they're all, they're, they're doing their thing, even in a virtual setting. They've got a fundraiser with a, an organization called Title Tees, where 100% of the proceeds go to keeping our oceans clean. And like I said, they're, they're keeping it up even in a virtual environment, and I find that amazing. I absolutely love that. One thing students are really concerned about is that is graduation. On the subject of prom and Governor Lamont's current executive orders, we're all just hoping dearly that Governor Lamont doesn't follow Governor Baker of Massachusetts in going through the rest of the school year. And a lot of students, a lot of parents, would much prefer a, I'm gonna say properly scheduled in that it, it would hopefully work for everyone, postponement, as opposed to totally supplanting it with something else. And we, as students, are very glad that the school staff is honoring our thoughts about that. And I think it's very nice to have a narrative going about that. Speaking of going back to school, Alexandra, do you want to talk about?
So we're obviously not sure what the rest of the school year is going to look like at this point, but I know that a bunch of students were like, we weren't expecting what was going to happen, obviously. So I think that a bunch of people still have stuff in their lockers and, like, stuff at school. And we were wondering if there was, like, some way that, like, it could be sorted out, like socially distancing, obviously, but like there was some safe way that students could get their belongings.
And really, our last thing is, we, we understand that we're high schoolers. We'll, we'll stay as high schoolers for now. But, um, if we could take part in evaluation of Dr. Willett as superintendent, we hope he knows how high of marks we would give him, because his commitment to the physical, social, emotional, health, safety, continued learning, and just general well-being of students is, it rings especially true now, but it's always been there. And I hopefully, if there is a silver lining to this whole situation for Talon Public Schools, it's that the public at large is appreciating the man with what has been, at times, a thankless job. Thank you, Dr. Willett. Thank you.
That's real, very kind of you. Thank you both. I'd really, very much appreciate that.
No worries.
Thank you.
I would like to add on there that if there are any parents on here, I know Dominique Fox had sent out a graduation survey. Am I correct about that? If we can make sure that that gets filled out by the seniors as to what their feelings are for the graduation. Obviously, we do not know what the future's gonna hold besides May 20th. So we'll have to go from there. Dr. Willett, do you have anything that you would like to add to that?
Yes, so Alexandra, we were, we were actually talking about today how to get students back into the building to go through their lockers and get things that they may have forgotten. Right now, we are still within the parameters of the state's requirements. So we, we will have to wait until, until May 20th to see what the governor's next iteration is, or close to May 20th. But my guess is somewhere around that time, they're gonna phase, do a certain, or a certain phasing of, of social distancing, you know? So we may be able to get students in somewhere in the, if I had to guess, June period of time, in groups to come in and go to their lockers. But we have to wait until after we get the next set of directives from the governor or the state. But that is on our radar. We want to make sure we definitely get everybody back in to get their stuff, if they have still stuff there. And if students have anything in there that's absolutely crucial, like medication, they shouldn't wait. They can reach out to me or to my office, and we'll find a way of making sure they get it. So if there's something crucial, urgent, that is needed, we can help with that. So just how, people can reach out to my office and we'll help. And prom is a tough one. We did have to cancel the prom at the Marriott. But I know that, that Ms. Fox and Mr. Pollanda and Mr. Blaze and others are working very hard at the high school. They put out the survey, and they're looking for ways to try to provide some senior activities, junior-senior activities, that, you know, that will hopefully give some of that energy and feeling back. And so we're all, we're all there, and our hearts are with you, and we know how difficult that must be. So we're looking for ways to do that with the students' input, and hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna get there. And when we find out May 20th, what the, what the next step is for Connecticut, we'll have a much better idea of what our options are. So we're gonna be creating certain scenarios with the help of you. And we will take action on one of those scenarios around, on or around May 20th, when we know what our next set of directives would be. So I wish I could be more specific about that. I'm sorry. But that's about where we are with it, and we should know better around May 20th. But we will be looking at options right now, and many of those will be driven by students' feelings about it. And I think that was, was that covered most of it?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, and keep up the good work, and we'll get some answers at some point. So let's go on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Willett, if you could walk us through the budget considerations for H1?
Sure. So, so for H1, you know, we've been talking in Finance and Facilities Committee some, for the last meeting or two, about the impacts of COVID and the COVID-19 pandemic global crisis. And as part of that conversation, we've been talking about FEMA, you know, and, and financial impacts that we are going to be incurring from the standpoint of staff, staff needing to cover other staff, and, and what the impacts will be of these various pieces of legislation that have been put in place, you know, to help the communities mitigate the situation, such as the FF-CRA, which is the Federal Family Coronavirus, Coronavirus Relief Act, the CARES Act, and, and the various executive orders, including SEVORR and so on. So, you know, all of these things are still things that we are working out and will continue to do so. We're very close to working it out with the bus. We did work out agreements with all of the bargaining units. We are still working very hard with all of the staff to fully utilize everyone as a, as an interesting benchmark. Thanks to the food service staff, we served 800 meals over last weekend, because they can now order for the day and then order over the weekend. So for families that are in need with children, and really all families with children in Talon, there, there were 800 meals. So the USDA has given us the ability to do that, so we will expect some reimbursement for that. But as we come into the end of the year, you know, as you are aware, many, many people have lost their jobs. Unemployment is very, very high. You know, all you have to do is turn on the 6 o'clock news to be, to be made aware of every struggle that the American public is having right now. And that translates down to our local level as well. So on April 28th, I expect that the town council will be taking up what their next steps are with respect to the budget. And that budget conversation is headed our way as a Board of Ed very soon. They're going to have to figure out, you know, what, where they're going to set the bar. And the latest, you know, or not latest, but executive orders throughout the process have given the town councils and municipalities a great deal of flexibility with respect to budgeting. So there are some questions that will likely be resolved in the next few weeks that the town council will be grappling with, such as, well, you know, will there be a referendum? They, they will have the authority to set a budget without a referendum now for this cycle. And my guess is they'll, they'll be looking at a lot of financial considerations in the next few weeks, and, and even next week, and that they'll be looking to, you know, to take into consideration the state of, of, of people in town with respect to their employment and, and other financial struggles that probably have been exacerbated or created by the COVID situation. So I think we can expect that, you know, that there'll be probably a consideration of where all of the department and Board of Ed budget should be. And I think we, we would want to start thinking about, you know, what might, what might need to be considered if, you know, if the budget of 1.54% that the Board of Education has adopted is not something that, that, that can be supported at this time. It's something that we should, as a board, start to consider. I'm not sure what the end result will be ultimately, but it is a conversation we, we probably start to need, need to start to have. And so we should find out on April 28th, or have a better idea after the town council meeting on April 28th, you know, what their thought process is with respect to this. But I have started to think about it myself, so...
Just a quick question. After the 28th, they make a decision. Is there a way that we can also create, like, or ask for a joint meeting between?
Somebody's got their mic on and...
I think it went to Keith, Kenneth's iPad. So if we can mute him?
Kenneth, put on your mute button.
Kenneth, I'm sorry, I'm muting you. No disrespect, no disrespect intended. So anyway...
Sorry, well, Dr. Willett, I had my hand up, and that was exactly, you read my mind, Ashley.
Okay, perfect. So is there an opportunity? I don't know if you heard my question, but my question essentially was just, you know, having the joint meeting between the town council and the board, having that discussion. And I don't know, like, when that would fall into play into that, but...
I think that probably would make sense. Typically, we do have a joint meeting. I think it would be good if, I can definitely bring that up with Mike Rosen, Town Manager. And I would, I would imagine that you, Slungren can bring that up with Ms. Nicio and say, you know, we would like to try to pull together a, a joint meeting to discuss it. You can make that request. There, I don't know where in the process they'll be at the end of the meeting on the 28th. But we do typically, in a normal budget cycle, have a joint, you know, meeting where we talk about it. And to some extent, I know that, you know, there is a pretty good understanding of where we were with the 1.54. I was going to do a presentation for the council, a second presentation. You were, you saw the first one, was gonna do a second one. I think a lot of that got put on hold, so I think a conversation, you know, between me and the Town Manager, I can ask that, and they can pass that on to the chair, or you could reach out to the chair directly.
That's fine. I can, I can send Tammy an email. Not a problem. Kate has her hand raised.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we had to wait until the 28th, or if we could get ahead of it. It kind of sounds to me that you were going to get ahead of it. Ms. Slungren, am I right, or?
Yeah, I think I'll send her an email and see exactly what we can do to find out when that joint meeting can take place.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I see Ms. Moran's hand up.
Karen? We need, oh, she muted.
I unmuted myself this time. Trying to be proactive here with these meetings. I just had a question, Dr. Willett, about, there's information coming out from the state about tracking our expenses for municipalities, and that includes Board of Educations for school districts. Is that something that's happening now, and we have to submit that, or?
Yeah, we are, we're doing a lot of extensive tracking. FEMA, you know, I'm setting up specialized forums. We've been logging what everyone's work is each day. And FEMA, you know, we've, we've attended webinars and other things that we needed to for, to bring us up to speed. And I, you know, I have a role in the EOC, and pay attention to what's happening every day there. So basically, we, FEMA has a lot of forms that we are going to be processing for reimbursement. However, one of the big asterisks on most of the things that FEMA has, in terms of reimbursement, is that it cannot be coming from any other place. So we have a couple of acts here, FF-CRA, some executive orders, and CARES Act, and so on. FEMA will not reimburse for something that has another reimbursement opportunity in some other form. And the other piece is that FEMA is not used to the volume it is about to receive. I mean, typically, you know, there's a hurricane or a tragedy and these kinds of things. It's gonna be a state or a series of states and localities. In this case, it's the entire United States that will be sending FEMA paperwork, both county and municipality. So, you know, this is going to be a Herculean task for them, FEMA, to figure out. But we are gonna be tracking everything that, that relates to work we've done for the COVID pandemic, and we'll be submitting it, and we're also tracking everything that we need to track for the state, too. So I'm kind of, and we'll have all the info that is needed at the time, but from FEMA, as a school district, I think certain places in the municipality will get, get it. But I'm not sure as a school district, there'll be much coming from that.
And as, as far as FEMA, I'm not sure if this is correct. They reimburse 75%?
Yeah. Yeah, that was what I read.
And the town is 25%?
I would have to refer to Lisa for, you know, for any additional breakdown as to reimbursement. But that, 75% is what I had read. You know, again, I don't know that any, like, it's 75% if it applies. And for us, you know, certain things I'm doing right now, we already had, or we have other methods for paying for. So USDA, for instance, is gonna be reimbursing for lunches. And so we wouldn't necessarily be filing to USDA for that, because certain things will be reimbursed. Now, for the labor, we can, we can file perhaps in that area. But again, you know, I expect that FEMA will be heavily overloaded. And, and you know, we're just gonna have to have patience, I think. I don't know what the timelines are going to ultimately be on us getting reimbursed. There's clear timelines on what we have to do for submission. But when certain things, dollars are actually coming back, that, that, to me, is not clear, but perhaps others will, will have that answer right now. I would assume, just thinking about it, that FEMA is not used to handling a situation of this magnitude with respect to the paperwork that they're about to receive. So I'm thinking that it's within reason to think that, you know, some reimbursement-type activities would not necessarily happen on a, on a timeline that people are expecting from FEMA.
And then I just had another question about our education reserve fund. Is that something we or you could reach out to our representatives about as far as the state level and?
Well, we, you can, you could actually, a municipality can entertain a 2% ERF. It's dictated more by your ordinance in town. And Ordinance 86, Chapter 8, I think, is our ERF. So that would have to be reopened to have that be modified. I talked to the Town Manager briefly about that. My, my sense from that brief conversation, which I do not claim to be extensive, but my sense from that brief conversation was that... but my sense from that brief conversation was that there might not be a lot of interest in, in reopening that ordinance of the charter or anything like that because of other, other complications. So, but it is something that could be brought up certainly by, by our chair, our co-chair with the council and just the council chair and asked about. But my, my initial feeling or response that I received was that there wasn't a big appetite for going back in to do that. I do think it, it could be very advantageous, advantageous for us as a community. But I certainly understand, you know, the considerations around it, so.
Well, maybe that's something that could be part of our joint discussion. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Christine, you have your hand raised.
It should be Christine Griffin.
Yes, Griffin. I was actually going to bring up the education reserve fund as well. I'm, I guess I'm concerned about if we were to ask the council to bring that up to 2%. That's, you know, a hefty fund, fund there. And, you know, Walt, based on our discussions over the past couple of months with what we could request out of that, it seems like everything we kind of want to just doesn't really fall under the category. So I'm just wondering, are, were we planning on revisiting what we might be able to pull out from the existing 1% fund for next year? And maybe try to kind of push that through the council a little bit more. You know, I know some of the stuff we talked about was, you know, like some furniture and fixtures and some of the interactive displays and that kind of stuff. So I'm just concerned if we put another 1% in there, is the money just going to get tied up for expenses that we can't get from it anyway?
Yeah, it used to be a little bit more flexible than it is. But right now we'd have to go in and change ordinance 86, chapter eight. And so that's the real bugaboo on that that would have to be transcended would be a willingness to, to go in and open that up again. Because then it would, that would be what would have to happen to change the language. Right now you can get capital, special ed or technology costs out of it. And Ms. Griffin and I, you know, we've talked a lot about that. FFC has talked a lot about what, what is and what isn't and what could and could not possibly fall in that category. So, you know, to answer your question though, more directly, yeah, you'd have to, that would have to have be, they would have to agree to open up that, that ordinance and chapter again. And that, that would be probably the sticking point. People may be a little trepidatious about doing that because they felt, they would feel like once they opened it, then it could be open for changes in many different directions. And that would be probably the concern. So, but it always can be asked.
Just a quick question on that for my, my own clarity. This is only by opening up the whole charter then is to get that, that one particular place modified. So that would bring open all the rules and ordinances that we have, correct?
Yeah, if you're opening that ordinance, then presumably the, the argument I have heard made is that then you would, you would need to be opening up, you know, other ones for consideration too. That was, that was what had been stated to me as well.
Okay, okay. Jacob has his hand. Jacob?
Thank you. Just one other thing. I know that if we do go down that route, there's a process to changing an ordinance. I know they have to have a public hearing and some other things. So concerning that they'll have the meeting up on April 28th and the clock is ticking for getting any budget modifications in. I don't know, it's just something to take into consideration that getting an ordinance change doesn't happen overnight. So we might want to look at some other strategies as well. But I also think that before we take too many steps, we should probably wait until the town council meets up on the 28th and figure out what they're, what they want to do.
Okay. Now Kate and Karen, are your hands still just raised from last time or did you re-raise them? Oh, Kate is muted.
I re-raised.
Okay, go ahead, Kate.
So if I, I just want to make sure that I have this kind of correct in my head. We have this education reserve fund ERF formerly known as the 1% fund. And historically that has been like kind of a savings account sort of extra, well, like money at the end of the year was rolled into this fund. And there are limitations on it. We can use it for only certain things, capital, sped, tech costs. In order for us to be able to access this fund, given this emergency situation, who needs to change it? Is it the town or is it like the state or is it both? Like who, like?
It's the town. The state's already, yeah, the, the state already opened it up for that possibility. It would be the town that would have to change it.
Okay, so if the, if the town were, the town council were to change the, the ordinance 86, eight, Dr. Willitt, they, we would, might be able to use this to, to, to bolster our education?
Yeah, I mean, if you want me to run some bases on it, I can. But yes, essentially it would be in the town's hands to open that up again. And I think, you know, there would be a process they would have to go through for that. And then the language could be changed. A few years ago, the Ed, the Ed Reserve Language was changed during a process where it was open and other changes were being made. And so it would be a similar process to what we did. I think it was the, what happened.
Okay, Karen?
Yes, just when I was talking about the state as far as the education reserve fund, it would be to allow more than the 2%. That would be a state level decision. And then also when it was modified before, the town council took like two meetings to change the language. And that I don't believe had anything to do with the charter revisions that were going on. So I, I would question that. And this is an emergency situation. So I would think that that kind of has some bearing on what we do with that fund. Also, Dr. Willitt or Christine, maybe, I don't know what, as far as FFC meetings, if you did discuss what that fund language used to look like before it was modified. But I thought if not, maybe it might warrant looking at what it used to be for us as far as access to funds.
Yeah, I'm putting up the, the December 12th. I don't know if you all can see the document, but this is the, what I put up at the FFC meeting at that time. And there's a history of the educational reserve fund. You know, I only, I had, I tried to make it as succinct as I could, but I talked about the legal considerations, you know, what the ordinance is, chapter eight. This is in the minutes of the FFC meeting, I think for December, was it December 12th? So I think this is available there as a document in case anybody wanted the background on it. And so this, this, this will give people a general idea of where it comes from and how, when it was modified originally and when it came into effect. And my impression is that, you know, it was around the time that they had the ordinance opened up or they had other things opened up. But I can research that and anything else the board wants me to. But there's some documentation in the FFC meetings of December that would help articulate this further if people wanted to go look at that.
And I do see Griffin, Griffin has her hand up. So let's just go to her because I'm sure she might have something to say with the FFC since that was a part of the question.
Thank you. Yes, we've talked about this extensively. I guess I would have to research as far as what the wording was before. Walt, I don't know if you recall. Was it always special ed, capital and technology?
No, I could do, as, as I had, we had talked a couple of times, we never really got around to it. I can do a full history of it if you want. And I can go back to its inception and kind of walk all the way through. But no, it was, prior to that, it was, it could be used for, for a lot more. It got changed. It got changed and limited.
I know we talked about it so much, so forgive me for not remembering exactly. Was it not allowed to ever be used for recurring expenses? Was that this fund or was that something different?
It was not meant to, we're not supposed to, to offset things budget to budget in certain ways. Like you can't use it for personnel, that kind of thing. But you weren't, there were less limitations on the categories of, of what could be used for. But, you know, the, right now, I can give you a history on it, but that's not what exists right now. So if we want to talk about what to do with it, I can give you a history of that up at the next FFC and I give you a really good history of it. But again, it's not what it can do right now. And I think that's, and I have all the strikeouts and I have all the documents of the, you know, where it was and how it was changed and all of that.
Let's go to Plord, has her hand raised?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I was just going to point out, and I think Griffin just did, it, it never has been able to been, be used for operating expenses. So if we're looking to offset the budget next year, that's not something it can be used for. Also, I'm really not comfortable saving $800,000 a year in our budget. If we're supposed to spend it, let's spend it on programs. Let's spend it on the kids, let's spend it on cameras, whatever we can spend it on in that regards. But saving $800,000 and changing an ordinance to save $800,000 a year, I'm not really in favor of.
You have, well, you see.
No, we have Karen and Chris and Griffin, so Karen?
So the education reserve fund is, is reviewed every few years and I believe that's in the language.
It is.
It's, I think it's, I don't have it in front of me, every five years, something like that.
Yeah, three to five or three.
Three to five years. And I think the, the point that's trying to be made in allowing to add funds to that is because we're in an emergency right now. And that fund was created initially for transparency. So in that regard, it shows the public that that money is there. And for the next, we don't know what's happening for the next year. We don't know what kind of long-term consequences we're going to have with educating our students and helping families. So I look at that as a transparency mechanism for us to use the funds that have been saved this year and putting them towards next year or following years because we don't know. A lot of don't know.
Christine?
I guess my only concern with that is if we put $800,000 into that fund, let's just say we can open it up, we get the ordinance. I kind of agree with Christina as far as does it make sense to put $800,000 into a fund that might have more stipulations than spending that money at the end of this year on programs and that kind of stuff. If the, if the money cannot be used for recurring salaries and that kind of stuff, I'm not sure we want to put it into that fund and then have it stuck there. And then we're trying to fight to get it out. So that would be my only concern. I think 1% of our budget is, you know, is, is a lot. And 2% though, it just seems like a lot to be putting into a fund that we don't know if we're going to be able to get it out. And I don't know if we're going to be able to find that out before June 30th.
So.
My only thought is I'd rather take the money that we have in there, whatever we might have left over this year and figure out a way to use that money to pay for some of this stuff. But I don't know if putting another 1% in there, if we want to go down that route. But that, that's just my thought. And I think we should definitely look into old language and just figuring out if there's a way to talk to the council as far as changing the opportunities of what we can use it for. But I just don't know about putting more in it. That's just my, my thought.
Thank you, Christine. I see Reenie, Reenie has her hand up and she hasn't said anything yet, so let's get to Reenie. There she is.
I am. So I agree with some of what's being said. We can't spend money on programs for next year with money from this year largely. And I mean, that's similar to paying for operating expenses. And I think we've talked about that in FFC a little bit and, and other times about that. So while I agree on some hand, you know, you don't want to continue putting money into a fund that seems limited. To me, the best, you know, avenue might be again, a discussion about maybe some different requirements or some different parameters around the money that goes into that fund. With that said, you're always going to have large capital expenses and it does allow us to not have to put money in for capital down the road or annually or whatever. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses on both. I know at this point we're talking about looking for ways to support the budget next year. And I'm definitely for whatever we can come up with. So, but I, I'm not sure how this is going to go down with that fund. And what, but I'm, I'm thinking the best is to try to bring that up if we can have a, a joint meeting or something and try to talk about it with the town council.
And I mean, I think ERF was generally for special projects, for capital projects, for special ed fluctuations of a certain kind. You know, your one-to-one could be used in a place like ERF, you know, that kind of thing. But, but you can't offset personnel costs, you can't supplant, there's certain things. So it has some limitations to it. And, you know, it can help a district have some really good options. But in a situation like this, just to, just to jump a little bit ahead, I think that there's three potential places that we could be looking at the end of this year. There's going to be some end of year things that we might need. And so I'm compiling an end of year list for the board to review. ERF, you may want to make a contribution to the ERF because, you know, the, the technology piece, for instance, did help us a little bit this year. We offset about almost 10,000 in technology and that did offset the budget a little bit with respect to how that was done. It wasn't done in the wrong way, but it can impact things favorably for the town and the board. And, and it was used that way. And at the end of the year, there also may be a consideration of transferring some aspect of what remains in the balance to the town. So once looking at, you know, looking at the three containers, there may be some end of year expenditures that we want to make. There may be some ERF money that, you know, that would roll over to ERF and maybe a portion of what rolled over would not be requested to the ERF, but would be requests, you know, would roll over to the town. Those are going to be more or less the three containers or three options that will probably be facing you in the next meeting or two or three. And, and, you know, if we do have to contend with a tough budget situation lower than 1.54, depending on how much lower, we would need to have conversations about how to cover that. And we won't be able to cover it with strictly program concessions. I think all of you know that the 1.54 had a lot of program concessions in it. So we could get so far with program concessions. But, you know, we, we would have to think about how to manage it. And that conversation will be something we, we probably want to start having soon. But again, after April 28th, we'll have a better idea where the town is.
Okay, Kate?
Yeah, I, I, oh, am I muted? No, okay. I just want to make sure that, that I'm being clear. I don't, I'm not advocating for putting a whole bunch of money in the ERF by any stretch. I think we should use our money for our struggling families and kids. So I just want to, I just wanted to, to verify, clarify, sorry that. I am advocating and hoping that we can consider using some of the current balance that's in the ERF for the current budget, the current spending plan ask that we have on the table. You know, with, with the past having been so waggly, you know, in terms of like the state and, and, you know, all of, all of the, all of the things that have impacted our fiscal situation in talent. I just am hoping that we can ask for some lenience or flexibility from the town council to use that. from the town council to use that, that money that's currently in there for, um, for our struggling kids and families, to make sure that they have what they need to keep our schools strong and keep our offerings strong and to support them. I mean, kids, we all know, everybody is struggling. And to think that we have to, you know, kind of take another one hit, another hit on the nose, um, is, is, uh, it's, it's scary to me. And that's not emotional, I'm, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, and you have, you, uh, just so you, to everybody's clear, uh, the FFC did work on this. And some money was spent on technology that now doesn't need, that it is not going to need to be spent next year. But, um, as, as Ms. Griffin said, it is limited. And, you know, we can't use it for certain things. So a certain amount was able to be used for things that were needed, but we could not use an amount larger than that. And they did look at all, they looked at that carefully. So that's, I think that's, that's what, um, she's saying there too.
Perfect, thank you. Karen?
Yeah, um, I was just going to say, um, the conversation around the education reserve fund kind of is twofold, um, allowing us to put, you know, maybe up to 2% in there, but also being able to relax the restrictions around it to give us flexibility, as Kate said. But, um, because we, there's so much unknown going into the future for, for school districts right now. I am very worried about the challenges ahead and I'm very worried about, um, our most vulnerable kids, um, those with disabilities, those who are already academically at risk. The school's a place, um, that's their social, emotional lifeline. And I think we should be very worried that this will have lasting consequences for them. And I think we need to be ready funding-wise to be able to address a lot of that.
Thank you, Karen. Um, anyone, anyone else last comments? Go on to the next topic, H2.
So H2 is the Tallent Continuity of Learning Program Assessment and Grading Items. I wanted to just clue in or, or loop in the Board of Ed. As we've entered this new program for the town of Tallent and the Tallent Public Schools, the Tallent Continuity of Learning Program is really almost like a special school system within a school system. You know, I won't go way back, but you all know the situation that we've been placed in and the pandemic. School systems are now online and across the state, we've all been working to make that work in the best way possible. So the TCLP or Tallent Continuity, Continuity of Learning Program has now, and I'm releasing tonight, the Parent Guardian Guide for the assessment and grading in that program. So there's a, uh, you know, there's a document the teachers use and there's a site, just like there's a gateway site for, um, the public. And I put it out there, a couple of things, it's on all of the daily updates. There are links to the, to the public gateway site. And I'll be posting this to the public gateway site tonight or tomorrow morning, depending on how late we go. But there is a guide for teachers, this is the parent guardian version. So the teacher one gets into all of the teacher vernacular and all the teacher stuff. This one is a pared down, uh, document in terms of size for pages to give the parents and guardians, um, a, a concise and hopefully pretty clear version of what, um, the grading paradigm and methodologies will be in the TCLP as we go into this hopefully last eight-week period of, uh, of being out of the physical school buildings and doing the online thing. My hope is, you know, somewhere in May, and they'll push it maybe out to June. And my hope is we would be back physically into the buildings, um, for next year. But assuming we won't be back in the buildings, uh, physically for the remainder of this year, this program guide highlights what our process would be for grading. So, um, just as a highlight, and I'll be posting it tonight, this gives everybody a general sense of the why. So there's a superintendent's introduction here. I'm talking about why we're following the grading process that we're following. And then you can click on the various sections and it'll jump right to the section. It goes into the specifics for the K8 grades. And then it goes into the specifics for the 912 grades. The K8 grades, um, are going to have a very similar thing to 912, but K8 developmentally is different and K8 also, there are some differences with respect to, not having the college transcripts and certain other, um, things that the state has obviously required for, and graduation requirements for, um, the high school level. So in the K8 level, uh, all grades will be calculated numerically in power school as they have been. But students will now be, uh, receiving a P as a pass grade if they are getting above a 60 numerically. Or they will be getting a, what is called L, which is a limited evidence of skill acquisition. So if they don't have, um, you know, if there isn't enough information to, to determine whether that young adult has, or that child has the skills that we would hope they have, then they receive an L. This designation is not a failure. And what I want, what I want to drive home is that, and this is where the introduction is important. The introduction talks about why we are doing what we are doing. And right now, you know, many, many families are struggling. This is a very, very difficult time for them. Students have to share technology. You know, just from Monday, from 8:00 PM Monday to 8:00 PM Tuesday, in the United States, we, we lost 2,700 roughly more people to COVID. That's the entire, that's, that's more than the entire enrollment of the Tallent Public Schools. So in numbers, you know, our country is suffering and people are suffering, a lot of jobs are being lost. Families are doing everything they can to make things work. And so the school system is, uh, is aware of this and, and the desire is to be responsive and be doing no harm, kind of a Hippocratic oath that we do no harm in this situation, that we provide education and we provide opportunities for children and families, but that, um, under no circumstances are we doing harm to those children and families. So I won't read word for word the introduction, but, um, you know, some of this, uh, is better and more easily understood if the introduction is read. So I won't do that all now, but I would recommend reading the reduction, uh, the introduction when I put it out there, uh, tonight or tomorrow. In any case, if a child or young adult is not, um, you know, we don't have evidence that they have the skill acquisition, um, then we would be giving them the designation of an L. And the designation of an L as limited evidence of skill acquisition basically says that, uh, you know, indicates that they, they may, we just have not been able to see from that child that they have acquired the skills we would have wanted them to. So it'll indicate to next year's educators that a content or skill gap may exist and that we may need to be, uh, approaching that child with the appropriate RTIS, RBI-tiered resources and measures so that we can make sure that that child gets what they need. And that due diligence will be executed to provide the student every opportunity to achieve a grade designation that indicates a mastery of knowledge necessary to successfully progress. So, um, you know, we know that because kids are now, some young adults are in the role of taking care of their siblings, um, you know, with families struggling to find food in some cases and with, uh, parents struggling to get their jobs done. And, and, you know, maybe the, the bandwidth and the wifi isn't available to a child till later in the afternoon and all of that, you know, we need to be focused on, did they acquire the skills? You know, if five assignments were assigned and, uh, the child was able to get the three or four of them in, and those three or four, uh, by looking at them, we can tell that they achieved the skill. We shouldn't be giving a zero for the fifth one because that child may not have been able to get that fifth one done for a variety of reasons that have nothing to do with that young adult. So, um, so the purpose of this is to say, you know, if, if we don't get enough information back from a child, if a child is not submitting assignments, um, we're not going to label that child as failing because in a situation like this, there's many, many reasons why that work may, uh, may not be being done. So instead of a fail, uh, the designation for having the requisite knowledge, um, is going to be pass, you know? And if the child, uh, we don't have enough information about what the child knows or, or can do about a certain skill or thing, then the designation is an L. The system of grading in this way would apply for the remainder of the 1920 year, which is essentially is going to be the next eight weeks, quarter four, uh, depending on how you look at it. Um, and the L would be what is used as a final designation if the child, if we just did not have enough evidence that that child, you know, uh, had a certain skill. Because, um, if there wasn't a lot of response coming back, we have a whole protocol for reaching out to the family and all that. But, um, again, it may not be anything to do with that child and the family, maybe doing the very best that it can. So it would just be that we have limited evidence of that skill being acquired and we have to deal with that. There's no final exams or any assessments that would count as 10 or more percent of a grade because, um, in this particular situation, we can't say, hey, here's something and it's going to count for the majority of the entire grade or 20 or 25% of an entire grade. Instead, we're focusing on progress monitoring assessments, which are much more frequent and of varied kinds. And again, the focus is, does that child have that skill? Have they acquired that skill or not? Over having, uh, some large, you know, large test that counts for a massive amount of a particular grade. And so at 912, uh, it's a very similar thing, but, um, 912, I put in a little bit more information and, uh, we put in a little bit more information about, um, the various aspects of the high school experience. For instance, UConn's early college experience programs and NCAA and things like that, provided some information from the state of Connecticut and Commissioner Cardona with respect to this. And we are well within and following very carefully the guidelines of both the state and the federal government with respect to how to approach the situation. And that's illustrated here. For the 1920 year, a Tallent High School student's GPA will be calculated based on the term grades for semester one. So if we're going to have any kind of GPA calculation, it's going to be relying on the last semester where we were actually, um, in the physical building. It ended around January 22nd, something around there, right about the beginning of February was when the new term started. And then you know, shortly after that in March, we ended up, uh, having to cancel classes and go into the online environment. So the last, uh, grade that will count towards any kind of GPA ranking that might be necessary for a scholarship or anything like that will be calculated off of the semester one, uh, average. And there, also at the high school, no final exams or any assessment that counts for more than, uh, 10% of a student's grade. And it explains roughly how that will break down. And it also explains that at the high school, the students will have a choice of taking a numeric grade from 0 to 100, or they can choose to do a pass fail. But again, because of the situation that we're in with COVID and families struggling and so on, even more so at this age, I have noted that children are being given, um, the responsibility of caring for siblings. Some of them are, uh, now working for the family. They may be holding a job that financially is assisting a family who's having difficulty. There's a variety of things that are happening, um, at this level. So, um, even though a child can choose a numeric grade or they can choose to go pass fail, there needs to be three conditions filled for a failure to be sustained at the high school level. One, the parent guardian has to be made aware of it and the parent guardian has to agree that the reason that this child's getting a failing grade is solely to do with things within that student's control and is not attributable to anything else. Two, the student's grade average prior to the cancellation of in-building classes was in the failing range. And three, a school counselor, social worker, and in the case of a student of special education, the case manager has been consulted by administration and verifies that it is appropriate for the student to receive that failing designation. So a child, a young adult will not be given a failing designation unless all three of these conditions are filled. If they are not filled, a student may be given an incomplete, meaning they, you know, will have an opportunity to make up that work and get a numeric grade later or a pass grade later, depending on what their individual circumstances are. Or they will also, in some cases, receive an L. An L at the high school level is similar in that it may just be that we have limited evidence of skill acquisition. But at the high school level, there are many courses that build upon other courses. So in the high school level, um, an L does not mean that the child, a young adult has failed. It just again means we have limited evidence that they have acquired the skill. So it can prevent a student from going to another level. So for instance, if they have an L for the year in something like Spanish one, it may be that they cannot progress to Spanish two because they may not have the skills necessary to do that and they would just be doomed in Spanish two to, you know, to fail it if they didn't have the proper skills in place. So the difference at the high school level is, you know, if there's going to be a fail designation given, it has to fill those three conditions. However, if it is, um, you know, if, if it doesn't, then an I or an L is in play and the L, the L is going to be something that, um, that is not, is not, you know, kind of labeling the child as having failed, but is also going to have to be considered as something that does not earn that credit. They can't move on with an L. So on a transcript, it does not show a failure, you know, in this case with, with an L designation, but it would not, the child or young adult would not get that credit. They would not get to move on, they would just have to redo that course. Because the point is that we just wouldn't have evidence that they had acquired the skills. An I can be given, yeah, I, I think the way I've been saying this is as, as if it's an alternative to have. The I can be, um, provided to a student along the way at any point here if a situation becomes difficult. So I know of a situation where, um, family members are impacted. Children have not seen their parent for a number of weeks because the parent has had to be isolated from the home and, uh, or from the, from the family. And so, you know, that can impact the child, they have to take on new roles. That job might actually get an incomplete because they, they didn't can, you know, fill any of the conditions of, uh, of what would be necessary to get a failure in this case. And it's entirely appropriate that they be given a chance to make that work up, um, and get it incomplete. So the objective is to make the system, um, you know, uh, make this, make sure that the system doesn't inadvertently do any harm to any child's future or any family that is already struggling. At the same time, uh, it does keep an academic standard going and a level of accountability going. Students at the high school will choose this option by May 29th. They have, uh, more than a month to decide, uh, what they want to do, in which direction they want to go. And then at the end of the document, I just provide some information, um, that we worked on as an admin group about the NCAA and certain other aspects. Finally, there is an appeal option. So at the, at the end of any process, should a parent, guardian or family feel like something did not go the way that it should have, they can make an appeal to the superintendent's office and the superintendent will review the case, um, and provide a, a response by August 1st. So this is a truncated version, but, um, a more direct version of what the assessment process will be for the Tallent Continuity of Learning Program with respect to the grade designations that, uh, a child would get, um, both K8 and 912. So I just wanted to provide the board an update on that. Give you a chance to ask any questions if you want.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Kate has her hand raised, so we can go to Kate.
I have quite a few questions and I'm excited about this because I think that this sounds, um, very thorough. I want to first say, uh, commend you on this because we are not here yet at crack. So, um, I have a couple of questions. So first of all, and you may have covered it, um, GPA impact. So, um, in terms of the students who choose, the high school students specifically, who choose the P or L, was it, they choose a P or L? Okay.
Yeah, they choose a numeric, they can choose to take a numeric grade or a pass, you know, pass fail.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so for the, can they do that for each class or do they have to? Okay, so like if, if English is going really well and science is not going that well, they may choose the pass fail for science and not, and the numeric for English?
Yes, they could, they can choose which classes they want pass fail and which classes they want numeric. They could take them all numeric, um, or all pass fail, or they can make it a mix. can make it a mix.
Okay, thank you. And then obviously, just this, I know how we do it in CREG, but I'm assuming that it's the same thing. The classes that are pass fail would not be figured into their GPA. Is that accurate?
Yeah, right now, if they take the, the pass fail, for instance, and they take an L, that, that course is then pretty much looked at as separated from credit process altogether if they get the L. If they get the fail, it, it will, it probably will have an impact on that particular quarter, but it does not impact the rankings from semester one. All rankings are based on the last moment of time we were physically together, that a term ended, and that's semester one.
Gotcha. Okay, so what, okay, I got you.
So it does not impact their chances for college, you know, it would not hurt their situation for a college application, for instance, and nor should, nor should it. I mean, in all fairness, the, the more data you look at about this, the families and everyone else, that we need the, we need to be supportive, so.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so sorry, I have a couple more. Messaging to teachers. And I, I don't know where you are with this process. It sounds like it's kind of hot off the presses, maybe not, I don't know, ish. So messaging to teachers, I know that I've seen some scuttlebutt about folks that are concerned that like, some teachers are like grading things really hard, and some teachers are not grading things really hard, and blah de blue. So, and these were, I think these are younger kids, this would be your K to eight, if I remember correctly. So, and, and I guess my question is, what's the messaging to teachers? And then how do we support teachers with this change in mindset?
Right. So, good question. And, you know, we, we have been working on this for a while, obviously, you know, be, being kind of jettisoned or thrown into it in mid-March. The teachers have done an amazing job attempting to adjust to all of the different things that they've had to focus on. And so what we've done for teachers and the TEA has been looked in on this, you know, and, and I've talked to a very, a large number of stakeholders to get to where we are. I have a, the teacher version has in it guidelines for the educators, and there's ongoing conversations about this. So for instance, this version is the teacher guide. And the teacher guide has a couple of, you know, similar components for clarity purposes, but it also has in it guidelines for assessing the student understanding. It has a FAC for them, and a number of other elements that help clarify what the Tolland Continuity of Learning Program's expectations are with respect to what we want done and with, done within for students and families at this time. And, and teachers are doing a, you know, really great job of adapting to this. And I think that, you know, that they were struggling like we all were, like I was in the beginning, you know, trying to figure out what the best way to do it was. And I think with this assessment guide that has been created, one of the major goals is to make sure that we are being consistent from teacher to teacher, school to school, in how we are doing it. So, you know, we're being very consistent now in how we, we assign the grade. We're also going to be very consistent in what we consider for assessment in the day-to-day as well. And that's the purpose of doing that document. You know, and so, and, and the timing of it is, we, you know, we have just finished quarter three. So the, mid-March, we were kind of stumbling towards the end of quarter three in the last week or two of trying to deal with, you know, the transition to online learning. And this allowed us to, to start this new term, this Tolland Continuity of Learning term, as its own special school term with its own special assessment paradigm. So everybody should be consistent, following these rules.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It's kind of like it put master-based learning on a fast pace, super fast pace.
Yeah, super fast, online, special, special version, right?
I have two more questions, and then I will seed the floor. And I apologize, and I appreciate everybody's willingness to let me kind of go here. So do we have any idea of the number of kids who may be kind of eking toward that L status? Like kids that are essentially not engaging in the, in the, in the online learning?
Well, you know, if I had to, I know that in the first couple of days, on a team of, let's say in a grade of 180, in the first couple of days, you could have had 20 to 30, that maybe we're having a little bit of trouble with work completion. But what we have to kind of think about, let's take a, an example like of the middle school or a middle school grade. Out of 180 to 200 kids, it's possible that 20 of those kids during a school day would not be doing their work if they were sitting right in front of you too. You know, like if I have a kid, a bunch of children in my social studies class in high school, and I used to teach that, I'd have 100 some odd kids, you know, maybe more, split out over five sections, you know, I mean, if out of them, a certain percentage every day weren't doing everything in the class that I was asking them to do, that would be a pretty normal thing. So online, if you have 20, or, you know, 20 out of 180, or 30 even, out of 180, that are not necessarily doing work completion, that's not a completely out of whack thing for a middle school when you're thinking about work completion. And then if you put on top of that, having to care for siblings, family struggling for food, internet connections, stress and pain, isolation and quarantine, and, I mean, holy mackerel, I, I look at 20 like, wow, man, we have 160 doing it. You know, like, wow. And, you know, 20 or 30, I get it, maybe per day that they're having a little bit of struggle, but my God, that's a miracle by itself. And that was in the first few days. Now, I think we're, we're getting into the swing of it, and, and I think people are, those numbers are better. But, you know, again, I, I just think our, our objective during this eight-week special term is to make sure we're doing no harm, and being supportive. So I think we are fulfilling those goals, and, and this will help us do that.
Okay. So, so I, I kind of heard from that, that we don't really know that we had a kind of, we were worried to start, but kind of people are getting up, up to speed. And then in terms of a due diligence, you know, you mentioned that earlier, you know, for those kids that have, you know, landed in the L range, you know, basically those kids that have not kept up with academic growth, how can we as a board support as we get back to normal?
Well, I mean.
Or is that something that you'll just let us know? Because?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, look, as a board, you are doing it now. You're meeting, we're talking, I'm presenting, we're discussing, you're asking questions, you know, we're your ground troops, and we're making things happen. And the board is, you know, the board, the board is doing, I think, what the board's role is to do, which is asking questions, and I'm, and I'm answering it, and, and letting, you know, letting me kind of fight the battles here, and get the job done with, with the people that we have that are highly trained to do it. So I think your workforce is doing an amazing job, and, and by meeting, and doing Zoom meetings, and, and answering to, you know, the public's questions, and, and having the meetings we're having, even talking about this right now, you know, as an item, and asking the questions you have, Ms. Howard Bender, I think this is, this is the role. And, and I think we're all doing it well. I would, I would say, this is more work than I've probably ever done. And, you know, and, and I would say that's true for every single person now, an educator, and even out of education, obviously, we're all working extremely hard. So this entirely online world, or almost entirely separate school district, was created in a matter of 15 days, you know, if you look at workdays, you know, or, or two, three, three weeks to that time span. I think we're all really, we're all making it work, and I attribute that also to families, you know, the families are really doing everything they can to keep everything going. And, you know, that's a, it's a beautiful thing to see, and so appreciated, all the sacrifice and hard work that they're making too, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm gonna lower my hand. I do have another question, but I'm gonna be quiet for now, because I know other people probably want to talk.
I found your questions pretty interesting, actually.
Can I keep going?
Let's give Jacob a turn, he has a hand up, and then we'll, we'll see how it goes, and then we'll go back. Jacob.
All right. My thanks quick. I just want to say thank you, Dr. Willett, for putting this together. I think it's one thing that I felt was kind of missing, was a good guide like this for the parents. I'm really impressed with it, and I'm glad that you were able to put it together. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Dana?
Hi, good evening, everybody. First of all, I just want to reiterate what Kate and Jacob said. I think this is a very thoughtful and thorough program. So thank you very much. But some of the things, through my note-taking and different things, I guess, my concern is, I, I see that you've implemented a lot of resources throughout this program for all, to support our struggling families and their kids' quality education. Like you had mentioned, you know, parents working and/or shared internet and different things. I know that there's been a lot of resources that we've done, and that the town has done. I'm hoping that maybe we could expand upon that. But I guess where I'm kind of going with this is, you know, we're in charge to support the top, we're all affected, right? So our charge is to support the Tolland community, to support our struggling families. And listening to you talk about the, the P versus the L, and the limited evidence of skill, having that strong support and learning game plan for the 2020-21 school year would be paramount. So those struggling kids that we were talking about, do, I know that this is probably a little bit more forward-thinking than, than what's evidently right now, but what's our plan going forward, you know, into next school year, to support those kids that are going through, you know, having this, this situation?
Well, I think we're going, you know, we are thinking a lot about that. I think that, as, as illustrated in the document, where, where the weight of that falls is going to be, well, across the board for what we call Tier One interventions, but SRBIRTI, scientifically research-based intervention and response to intervention programs and requirements by the state of Connecticut. We have resources, staff for that, but we're gonna, we're gonna need to really make sure that we are tactically using and strategically using, you know, those resources to cover where there would be learning and skill gaps. In a situation like this, we're, we're gonna have, we're, we're going to definitely have certain kids that have, you know, have some of these gaps. And, you know, we've, we have had them. I mean, that's been part of the education world, but, you know, we, we would expect naturally that there will be more now, because, you know, anything like this exacerbates people's struggles. So we're going to be prepared to address it, but now would not be, nor would, and you've heard me say this in the past, you know, we, we need to not only protect our SRBIRTI resources, but build them. And that has been one of the things I've been trying to do in the district. You know, this document, it was informed by, by admin and staff and others. And, you know, we know that, you know, in there, the SRBIRTI pieces that are, that are mentioned a couple times, we know that's going to be the backbone of helping some of these children that are going to be impacted by this. So we really need to preserve that. That's why in the budget cycle, I'm gonna work very hard, and, and I would like to find options that have no chance of reducing staff. I think next year, we're gonna need, I mean, we always do, but we're gonna need all hands on deck to get this done. So as we get into the budget conversations, I, I want to avoid the loss of any staff. You know, 1.54 budget is, is where the line was drawn with respect to the staff, and the board adopted that. I'd like to stick to that staff level. I understand we might need to figure a few things out outside of that, but in terms of human beings, I, I want to make sure we have the same number of human beings. We're going to need them next year. We're gonna have a lot of work to do.
And Dr. Willett, to kind of piggyback, thank you, but to kind of piggyback on my question is, you know, obviously, next year, the struggle will continue if we don't continue to practice and have those intervention pieces. Have you seen a spike? I mean, I know that we have children already doing their math intervention, their reading intervention, and having their interventionists in part of their, their continuity learning program right now. Have your teachers seen an increase of meeting these interventionists as of right now, with additional students tacking on? And what's kind of that game plan?
Well, I think because we are in a place where we're fairly new with all of it, I think the interventionists have been during a, you know, I'll use the word Herculean task again, of trying to adapt their work to the students that they've been working with, but do it in a way that's video conferencing, virtual and online. I, I think that out of the nature of having certain families and students struggling with work completion, that's naturally going to mean that they need more assistance. And so the answer to that is yes. Although I have not had a direct look at data specifically, I know intuitively that, you know, we do have more people that are unable to complete their work for reasons they cannot control, which will put them at a knowledge disadvantage, which means that we will need to pick up more weight. And the people picking up that weight will be Tier One classroom teachers, and Tier Two and Three RTI SRBI teachers, both through co-teaching and through, you know, and pull-out, depending on the situation. They are probably having to do some more of that now, and most certainly will be having to do more of that as we get into the next school year. So I could, I would bet, you know, I could bet whatever I needed to bet on that, I'm pretty sure that that would be what would have to happen, and generally what is happening.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dana. Anyone else have a hand raised? We're all set. Kate, you want to just get in and just?
I do, I do, I do. Thank you. So my question has to do, this is the grading program. And so when I think of grades, I think of academic progress, and like, the grades are reports about like whether or not a student is mastering the content, content area stuff. And so I was kind of wondering, we all know, because we are all dealing with it, if, if there are any measures that you guys are taking in terms of monitoring kids and families, but more, more kids, because those are our charges, those are our friends, right? Mental health, like, but what, like, in terms of, like, right now, what are we doing? And then when we get back, what are we gonna do? And that was my last question, and I will now mute myself.
So we are paying very close attention to where children and families are. And, you know, in a way, the online system that we have means that we're, we're doing a lot of outreach. And when and if we don't see a lot coming back, you know, it's very important that, that we, you know, approach it in a way that's very supportive of the family, but we are definitely approaching it. And in the most extreme circumstances, you know, we are doing it in a way that seeks to provide assistance. So just in this document for, for the community, I want to highlight, I can't tell whether you can see my highlighting or not, but there is absolutely nothing wrong with communicating needs or seeking assistance. Please don't hesitate to do it. And when we do sense that a child is struggling for a variety of reasons, usually it comes up in areas like work completion. We will reach out to the family, we will ask them what supports they need. And even outside of that, the nurses' numbers, virtual nurses' offices are available, the virtual guidance and social work and psychological offices are available. And so we are dealing with and helping a number of people each day. And, and our own staff needs that too, you know, we have EAPs, we have the Employee Assistance Program that has been active here a lot. And we're getting through it, we're getting the families through it, and we're getting our workforce through it. So I just want to make sure and reiterate to everybody that there is nothing wrong with, with saying that you need some help. All, every single one of us has been in that situation, so, you know, just, just reach out, we will help you. We can do a lot to help, so I want to encourage people to do that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to H3, the Board of Ed goal setting.
Okay, so. Okay. So, I'm gonna hope that this sharing thing is working out the way that I was planning it too. Okay. Yeah, it kind of got shuffled a little bit, but I'm gonna try to, boy, this all got shuffled. Give me a minute. Is that right? All right. So, somehow I got, this particular thing I'm trying to show you is the, okay, so G4 from a few years ago. I wanted to talk and give you a general idea that there are people that can help us do our goal-setting process. There's people from Advance, there's people from CAPE, there's people from Connecticut, you know, Connecticut School Project that we've used for a few other things. And we can do it with any of these agencies. Many of them will ask for some kind of reimbursement or cost for having a facilitator come out and do it. So, there are a number of these groups and I have people's names and I'm happy to pursue that and see which one could do it at the soonest opportunity. The problem that we're contending with for this particular goal-setting process using something like, you know, the agencies that I described are that the COVID thing has thrown a wrench into people coming out and being able to work with the group. So, if we were gonna do it in a way that is normally done with sticky pads and people moving around and sticking things on and then narrowing and sticking and narrowing and sticking, that is something that is usually best done in person and not on a virtual method, even though I'm sure they could try. Most of them are not used to doing it in that way. And so, it would either be a situation that's somewhat clunky or it could be something that has to be pushed out a little bit further into the future. My impression is that the board is interested in getting into this right away. So, what I would throw out there is I can talk about the other options, but back, the last goal-setting processes that were done, particularly the one that was done in 2018, I did for and with the board. So, I'd like to give you a sense of what we did at that time. And then, just open it up to the board to discuss, you know, whether you would like to try to use this model that was used at this time or whether you would like me to contract with one of these other individuals to come out on their timeline and do it when they can and possibly add a cost. So, I just wanted to direct your attention to G4 from March 28th of 2018. I didn't have as much time as I would have liked to put this together in the way that I wanted to put together. So, I'm gonna rely on what I did in 2018 and just kind of talk you through it as quickly as I can. But I can adapt this in a series of ways to our current needs and works with you however you really want. So, if you look at it, there was a sequence for this. Step one was a brainstorming activity. It was done pretty much on the timeline we're on now, actually, interestingly enough, back in 2018. There was a brainstorming activity. Board members discussed and brainstormed goal opportunities. Step two, between meetings, there was an online ranking form that I set up so that board members could rank the goals that were kind of shared in the first brainstorming activity. And then, at the three, step three for April 25th, those goals were refined and there were established indicators of success for each of the goals. And then, step four was ultimately, I set up a meeting with the town council so that the goals could be shared with the town council. And the town council would be sharing their goals and there'd be discussion about the mutual bodies' goals. The goal system that I set up at the time in 2018 was, for some of you may be familiar with this, a SMART goal system. So, the SMART goal system, SMART goals are strategic and specific, measurable, attainable, results-based and time-bound. So, to give you an example, this is, let's see. This was the brainstormed list from April 11th of that year. This was everything that they, the board came up with. So, the board would throw out things and I would record everything that they wanted to achieve. There were no wrong answers. There was nothing that was going to be rejected at step one. So, step one was basically every board member contributing everything that they wanted to the list. Step two, let's see if I can find. Let's see. Sorry. Step two, which I might have closed here by accident. Well, this is, this is what the, oh, here it is. I'll have to change the sharing screen here. Let me try to do that real quick and I hope I don't mess that up. No, forget it. So, basically, there's a web form that the board went on and the board would give each of these items a series of stars. Please give each goal star ratings, one not important to five most important for the 4/25/2018 Board of Education Discussion. So, the board then, between the time of brainstorming the goals and then ranking the goals, ultimately, this document was created for the April 25th meeting. So, the, whoops, this is not the right, this document was created for the April 25th meeting. So, the board ranked them and then the top goals were eventually put into a document that consolidated the goal. And I worked with the board to consolidate them. It had the relevant brainstormed items and each of these brainstormed items was then consolidated into a comprehensive or more generalized broad goal. And then, indicators of success. I worked with the board to develop indicators of success for each goal. So, for instance, out of that long list of things, they were narrowed down through a star activity that was online, came down to these individual comprehensive goal suggestions. Each of those related to certain brainstormed items, so nobody's stuff was left out. And then, the last part of that activity was in creating a indicator of success. So, for instance, how do we know we achieved parent and community outreach? Well, the relevant brainstormed item was to enhance communication with the residents and increase parent guardian engagement with the schools. How do we know we've done that? What is our indicator of success? It is Communications Committee will identify and evaluate five communication methods by the completion of 2017-2018. So, it allowed for the board to do brainstorming. It allowed for the board then to narrow and group those brainstormed items and prioritize them. And then, they organized them into comprehensive goal suggestions and then set indicators of success for each of those goals with a timeline where they would be achieved. So, another one was a productive working relationship with the town council. And then, you can see these indicators of success that would, you know, if those indicators are achieved, then the productive working relationship with the town council is achieved. Budget stabilization in the faces of unexpected changes in revenue. Once again, it ties in all of those different brainstormed items. And then, there are indicators of success that if those indicators are achieved, that will show that the goal was essentially achieved. So, back in 2018, that is what the process was. This is an email from that time where I more or less describe and then the attachments and the links and the forms that went with it. Like I said, I didn't have as much time as I wanted to with, for this activity. So, I mean, for this particular presentation to the board, I wanted to include a lot more here and put it in a format for this year. But I didn't have time to do it, so I'm just showing you the documents that, and the process that I used with the board in 2018. So, this is an example of an email that went out in 2018 to the board describing the documents and the instructions and the various steps. And what I was showing you there was the product of those steps and how that ended. If you, I don't know if you can click on that, but if you could click on that, you'll actually see the form that was used. I wasn't super successful in sharing that screen. And right now, it just shows up as a blank screen. So, I'm not, I'm pretty, I'm not gonna try sharing that because it looks like it'll just, oh, here it is. Wait a minute. Let me try to share this. Okay, can you see that one? Now, the goal rating activity? Can anybody see that? Okay. So, this is, this is the goal rating form that was used. Once they were narrowed down to a certain level, the board could assign a one to five-star rating to each of the things that had been brainstormed. And then, ultimately, they were put into a priority order. So, you know, going back to sharing the main screen here. The sequence was meant to give the board a multi-stage process for going from a brainstorming activity through a narrowing activity, through a consolidation activity where everybody's piece is included but consolidated into, you know, more succinct goals and then ultimately indicators of success. So, that's the process that I could design or put together for this board and you could start that almost immediately. Or, we can go and bring in the Connecticut Center for School Change or CAPE or one of the other groups and a facilitator can do it. But the facilitators, I, my impression is that they're scheduling out a bit and that it's complicated by this COVID situation. This I could get started almost immediately, but that would probably take a little longer to get going and would probably have a cost to it with most of those individuals.
Okay. Thank you. Reenie?
I just wanted to say, Dr. Willett, thank you for, you know, kind of taking us through what you've done in the past. I think that's helpful to get an idea. I personally, given everything that's going on, cannot see spending any money on an outside firm to do this. I mean, I don't know. I thought CAPE did it and I thought they didn't charge for that. So, maybe that's a potential option for us to look into. But that's just sort of my two cents, if you will. I mean, I'm anxious to get going on it, but if you feel like it's not gonna be particularly good, if we're not doing it in person, you know, I don't know what other people's thoughts are on waiting, but I definitely don't want to spend money on it. I think that's not the right message or the right, anything is not right.
Well, and you may, it may be that CAPE doesn't charge. I know the others do, but you'll be, you'll be in there, you'll have to get in their calendar or in their schedule, which may delay you too. So, whatever you, however you wanted to do it, you know, obviously, I'll help with.
Thank you, Reenie. Jacob?
Okay, thank you. So, I kind of feel like we kind of need to get moving up on this. I agree with Reenie that it's probably not the best idea to spend more money right now, if possible. I was just wondering, since I've never been through this before, Dr. Willett, if you could just briefly explain like what exactly a facilitator does in this whole role?
Yeah. So, some of the board will remember, using a facilitator, they came to work with the town council and the board at one point together. Basically, they're gonna do a very similar thing. They would probably get everybody to, you know, there would be a step in the process where they would ask everyone to brainstorm what they felt were crucial or important considerations for the board to be grappling with, that they would ultimately turn into, you know, a brainstorm set of goals. And then, they would ask probably that you narrow or consolidate those goals through a process of working together to prioritize or vote or give certain goals higher weighting than other goals. So, many times, they'll do this with a lot of, you know, 3M sheets and voting and using stickies and which goals, you know, put your thoughts on this and let us know what your votes are, you know, and how many people put a sticky on the one that you find is most valuable or star it. And ultimately, it comes down to a process where you have your most important priority goals and then there's a discussion of how you're going to achieve them. So, most all facilitators will follow that model and do essentially the same thing. It's just, you know, sometimes people prefer to have an outside group do it and sometimes people prefer to have it done internally. I think for us, the only reason I'm throwing out there the model of 2018 that I did with the board is, I know that one of the goals of the board has been to get moving on this. And, you know, we would, you, basically, you and I or us as the board, we control our timeline if it's you, you know, you having me do it. But if we're having some outside group do it or a person do it, that timeline is largely gonna be based on their schedule. Me, I work for you, so you can tell me, make this a priority in the next meeting and we're gonna spend two hours on it and we're done. But somebody else, we're gonna have to get in their schedule, find out if they have the two hours. There might be conflicts. So, that's why you may want to consider having me do it with you or get you guys, you know, I'll do the lifting on it and you do the creativity and then we get it done on a timeline that I think you want to get it done on.
All right. I'll just quickly say, I'm kind of leaning towards doing something like that. I think, especially considering that we're already within our fifth month or sixth month of our term and we've already gone through the budget process. We have a little bit of experience prioritizing and making decisions on a timeline. And just given the expenses and the fact that we want to get moving on it, I'd prefer to do it without bringing an outside person in, just me.
Thank you, Jacob. Griffin?
Oh, I'm gonna unmute you.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
I'm gonna go the opposite of what Jacob said. Sorry, Jacob. I just feel like, right now, I've, we've got a lot kind of on our plate as far as even with next year's budget and this continuity of learning program and just kind of figuring out all this stuff. And while, yes, I agree that it should be a priority, I would also rather hold off, at least, I should say, reach out to CAPE or whomever and find out when we can get on their schedule, because I also think it's something that would be much more beneficial in person. And I just think that Dr. Willett's got a lot going on to make another, you know, survey and then do all that. I just, I don't know. That's just my opinion that as much as I want to get this done, I feel like with everything going on with COVID, we might have to push this off a little while longer. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
Okay. Kate? Oh. Just real quick. I can kind of see why we should do it and I also am nervous, you know, how much time Dr. Willett has logistically to put towards this. I'm not interested in spending money on it. Write that down. A Democrat said that. But I, I'm kidding. So, I think that we do need to come to some meetings of the minds kind of sooner rather than later. I don't know what that looks like. And I don't know if there's anybody in our community that could potentially walk us through this. So, anyway, I just wanted to put my opinion out there.
Perfect. Thank you, Kate. Karen?
I would, I would like to wait, also because there's just so much going on right now. And I personally, my experience with facilitators, that it works better in person. And they have the ability to be that objective person in the room and to kind of build, build on everyone's input and get everyone to, you know, kind of come together and build some consensus. So, I like, I like that in-person use of a facilitator, however we can make that happen.
Okay, perfect. I would definitely agree with that whole factor of the in-person. If we can get there, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure exactly when that would be, but perhaps maybe we can reach out to CAPE, see if it'll be free, get on their calendar, see how, what the timeline is, because we don't know where we're gonna be in a month or, you know, I don't know if that's maybe the action that we go with and just find out what would be a free path to go on for a facilitator and just see what timelines are looking like. Would everyone kind of agree with that? Thumbs up. Okay.
So, I will, I'll reach out. So I will, I'll reach out. I will reach out to CAE to, to see what they will charge or not and see what their timeline is if, if that, that sounds like that's the way to go.
I definitely think free. So even if that center, I forgot the name was, that would be, you know, ask them as well.
Okay. Okay, Connecticut Center for School Change, sure.
Oh, yeah. They're going to charge us money. Sorry, they will. But we can ask.
Doesn't hurt in asking.
So my, my understanding, just so I get it totally clear, is the board wants me to pursue an outside group to do it. In this case, I will approach CAE and the Connecticut Center of School Change and see what their timelines would be.
And what, making sure that it is free, whatever path we're going on.
Okay.
Dr. Willett, do the, do the RESCs do anything like this? Or they would probably charge too?
They'll do it. They will definitely do it, but they will charge. Most of these groups will charge or they will, or they will schedule. If they don't charge, they've got people that want it too. So they're scheduling, you know, some time out.
Sure.
And so I have made some cursory outreach, but now that I know the, the board does not want to necessarily go with doing it internally, I will make sure to get that on for next time.
Okay. Perfect. So let's go to the superintendent evaluation. H four.
Yes. Superintendent eval, just lining up the right document to share here. And then choosing. Okay. All right. So you should be looking at this. So H four is superintendent's evaluation every April. Those board members who have been around know that generally April, I respectfully provide a reminder that, that my evaluation process starts around this time. But basically, the evaluation must occur no later than May 31st of each year with a written copy provided to superintendent, no later than June 30th. So it's written into my contract that I remind you of this. And so this is just the official reminder for April. You know, COVID had been doing it now, but this is, this is the April reminder for it. Just as a couple of quick things typically what happens, and I'll set up a timeline for the board. This is the one that, that I did a draft of. Again, I didn't have as much time as I wanted, but I should be able to post this to the dashboard for the BOE. Typically, what would happen here is between now and May 27th, the Board of Education would be scheduling one of its meetings, potentially that one for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. I'm invited into executive session. I present a document that highlights the actions and achievements for 19 and 20 in this case. Board Q and A follows and board members are provided information for a Google site that will allow them to submit their thoughts and rankings. So in the comfort of your own homes and offices from May 27th roughly to May 31st, Board of Ed members will review the material and submit their thoughts through the Google form for the chair and the vice chair to review. That Google form looks a bit like this. There are four domains. So this evaluation form is the standard form that the district's been using. I will provide documents for each of the areas. So there's an educational leadership area. There is an organizational management area. There's a community and Board of Education relation area. There's a personal and professional quality and relationship area. And then I provide information to you as a board, a bunch of artifacts and different things under each of those areas. And during the time from May to May 31st, the board submits ratings that go to the chair and the co-chair in form of a spreadsheet. Usually I'll set it up and then I share the form or I transfer ownership of the form over to the chair and co-chair. At that point, once I transfer ownership over, I can no longer see it. And I think Karen, Karen, Karen Moran, you, you remember that process. So she can also reassure you that once that is transferred, I don't see it. You can work on it. And then we come back together somewhere between June 1st and June 9th. I meet with the BOE chair and vice chair or co-chair. We talk about the ratings that are coming in. Any questions that they have, they can ask. There might be some articulations. People might want to know a little bit more about one or the other artifacts or information I've provided. And then June 10th, if we were following a timeline for this year, the BOE would have another executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. And the chair and co-chair would present my evaluation document to me and the board for review. I am invited again into that public session. Any additional Q and A happens at that time. The chair and vice chair typically make any necessary tweaks and then submit the final rating document to me. Ultimately, the final rating document has a lot of word is, words in it typically, but it's signed by the chair and the vice chair and by me. And then that's how we kind of wrap the process. And so June 11th to June 23rd, that process is usually finished by then. We all sign it. The requirement is that it's given to me by the 30th. And then the superintendent has the right to add a written thing to it if she or he feels so inclined. But the bottom line is that that process usually wraps up June and then to July, if there's some written attachment. And then the board typically enters some negotiations about, you know, salary or anything like that. So this is just the timeline. I'll post it to the Board of Ed dashboard. This is the document that typically covers these four sections. Documents are provided to the board to review. And then ultimately rankings are done. And, and then that culminates the process with the written eval that we sign. So I just wanted to do my due diligence here and remind the board of the process and the timeline. That's it. Unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
No. Okay. Let's move on to the committee and liaison reports. Griffin, do you want to do the FFC?
Sure. Well, we kind of talked about a lot what we've talked about in FFC. We mostly just kind of went through some of the, you know, ways that COVID was affecting the budgets. Obviously, we talked a lot about the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and as far as staff, how they were affected with taking sick time or, you know, leave to care for their family members as well and how that affected the district. We also discussed that the Family Resource Center and Food Services are self-sustaining programs, so they're not covered by the Board of Ed. And therefore, those employees are able to collect unemployment, which was just, we were glad to hear that, that they weren't kind of out of luck. We discussed possible impacts of next year's budget. And, you know, obviously that we really needed some confirmed direction from the town council. So we were, you know, we have to kind of wait and see, it sounds like until April 28th. And then we reviewed some more of the March expenditures. And we also discussed updating policy 3010. And we are, talked about having a joint meeting with finance and policy, probably the end of May. And that was a policy that we thought needed some updating. That's it.
Thank you. Dana, did the Birch Grove meet? I can't remember.
We had a meeting scheduled for last night. It was canceled. Right now it's still on process for where, where it was last time. They're still, they're still functioning at the job site. So that's a good thing, but now we postponed or canceled the meeting till next.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Dana. For town council, who was the liaison for that? Was that supposed to be Tony?
Yeah, he emailed me his report if you want me to.
We could speak about it. Christina and I were there. So, I mean, we, we, Christina, is that okay?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
Is it, is it okay for me to, to speak? Or Christina, do you want to do it since we were there?
Oh, sorry, Christina. I thought you said Christine.
Nope.
Oh, I'll let Jacob read his report or if Kate, you want to speak, that's fine too.
Okay. Well, let's make sure I don't forget anything, Jacob. Hold me, hold me to task. We talked about two things. We talked about an attendance policy that just essentially has to get updated based on legislative changes. We also talked about a civility code that Tony had, had written and had kind of done some research on. And we talked about that civility code being nested into the goals and vision of the larger board. So that's what we were looking at. We also looked at a tracker of the two buckets that Tony has talked about before, the, the required pieces, the required changes based on statute changes and then the ones that we were either interested in or felt that we wanted to have impact on.
Thank you, Kate. And just for Lisa's, she's taking the notes. That is for, just for policy, not for the town council, because I had asked.
Sorry, I got confused there.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Totally sorry about that.
No problem, but thank you for the update. So that's one more thing that's down. So we still have the town council. So Jacob, was that what Tony had written?
Yes, that's what he sent me.
Making sure. So go ahead, you can just read that.
Okay. So per Tony's note, the council did a round robin style update for COVID-19 information. Dr. Willett provided an update to the town. Most of the stuff that, well, actually all the stuff he mentioned is stuff that the Board of Ed's already discussed. Among other things, he talked about how COVID-19 is affecting our staff, how the meal program's been expanded to every child in Talon and the effects of canceling spring break or shortening it to a long weekend. Also, the town council approved the transfer of $85,113 from the Board of Education audited and unexpendited balance to the Education Reserve Fund. And finally, the other thing that may affect us is that the town council voted to delay the May 5th referendum to an undetermined date.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Karen, do you have anything for the census?
We're, I believe Talon is still ranked very high as far as response rate. High 60s, I believe. And just continuing to inform the public via social media really is our only avenue right now. And there's still information on the town website about filling out the census, but I believe people should be getting the paper form in the mail if they have not responded yet. And I believe that Mr. Rosen may have spoken about this at the town council meeting, that they, the census people will be probably postponing their door-to-door contact because of the virus. I'm not sure about the timing with that, but.
Perfect.
And the communications committee did not meet.
Perfect. So let me just make sure I didn't miss anybody, correct? And no one else had a different meeting, anything going on? Okay. Perfect. Committee liaison reports is all set. Chairperson's report, I do not have one. I've been so bombarded with work, I had not had a single minute to my time. So let's jump to board action, which is K1 for the nurses' contract. I will entertain a motion for the nurses' contract.
So I've loaded up in the shared screen the desired motion. If that would help.
So I'd like to, thanks, well, Christina Plord, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bargaining unit agreement for the Talon nurses to take effect July 1st, 2020 and extend through June 30th, 2023.
I'd like to second. This is Kate HB.
Discussion. Anyone have their hand raised for a discussion? Okay. Let's do the vote then. Karen?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Christine? Griffin?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Myself as a aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next will be public participation. There will be a two-minute time limit and the comments must be to the items on the agenda. Once again, Jacob will be the timer this time. 30 seconds, he will raise his hand to visually let you know. And that's it. Okay, we have Emily Bliss. So we just need to unmute her.
Hi, Emily. Hold on one sec.
Perfect.
There you go. You should be good.
Okay. Hi, I'm Emily Bliss from 46 Austin Drive. First of all, thank you, Dr. Willett, for making this situation the best it can be for students, staff and families of our schools. I'm a senior at TGS and just wanted to express some concerns on graduation. As I know, Governor Lamont's executive orders take precedence and you don't have much control on scheduling right now. But I felt that sharing my voice in this case could be beneficial. In the survey we were sent out today, seniors had to choose between a creative solution on June 18th for graduation or choosing a postponed date, which we were told could be canceled if social distancing restrictions are still in place on that postponed day. If we were to choose the postponed date and it was canceled, we were informed that we would be mailed our diplomas with no ceremony. This news very much affected the morale of our seniors as a large majority of us support postponing graduation to at least receive a safe and as close as we can get to traditional graduation. The U.S. Air Force commencement is a great example that students can still get properly recognized for their hard work, even despite social distancing restrictions. My question is, would you consider looking at the possibility of holding a graduation under social distancing guidelines, especially if it is in July or August? I have complete trust in you, Dr. Willett and administration, that you will continue to support our seniors in the following weeks before sending.
30 seconds.
I want to thank you all so much for listening to myself and fellow students. Your support means the world right now.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay, let's go to Nathan. And I'm probably going to butcher the last name, so Nathan P.
And just, just so you understand, we will, we will be talking to you in points of information. We usually don't talk, but just so they understand. Go ahead, Nathan. Go ahead.
Hi, Dr. Willett, everyone else. So I know you guys are all receiving, receiving like many voice and written concerns regarding graduation for our senior class. And I couldn't thank you guys enough for all your rigorous efforts in these tough times. I know there are many other pressing issues currently, so I won't take up too much time, but I just want to say, being a following, like a fellow senior, I've seen how hard many of my peers have worked and how much time they have put to get through to this day. And I know there have been many creative solutions presented to us with the situation we're given, because everything's changing in this kind of time. And I'm beyond appreciative that we have all this, these staff members and not parents that care for our students. And I know the, many of the plans for graduation are based on the decisions of the governor and state legislators. And I've also heard that there might be plans for a statewide graduation date. I'm not sure if this is true or not. My question was, would we be supporting this statewide date? And if not, what would the plans be for moving forward after receiving the data from the survey that Ms. Fox led out today? Again, I know you guys are all working extremely hard with these many new obstacles. I was just wondering what the steps for the future would be for all these students who have achieved a great amount to get to the point they are now. Thank you for listening. I just wanted to voice my concern with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Sonika?
Hi, guys. I'm Sonika from 66 Sugar Hill Road. And first of all, like my peers, I would like to thank you all for all your efforts as a high school senior. It is very comforting to know that we are being thought about. These are very stressful times. And while a high school graduation isn't a matter of life or death and there are relatively more serious problems that people are facing, it is still a very dear issue to our hearts. And I for one really appreciate. And I, for one, really appreciate that administration recognizes that. So thank you once again. That being said, the seniors, me, myself included, are still a little anxious about our graduation. As Emily said, the senior class would really love a graduation that appropriately allows for us to celebrate with our peers and commemorate our time in this great school system. Safety is, of course, the number one priority, but it would mean a lot if we could have a graduation where we can at least see our fellow students with which we have spent the last 13 years of our lives with, in person, even if that is six feet away with personal protective equipment. So thank you for listening. That means the world right now. And please know your efforts are appreciated and that the class of 2020 is more than willing to work with administration to come up with a graduation that is worthy of the hard, with the years of hard work, passion, and dedication that we have put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Fisher up next. Just have to unmute him.
Yep, yep. Fisher, yep, you should be good.
Hey, again, I just, I just wanted to say, truly, I could not be more proud of the class I have. We have been put into the weirdest, weirdest situation as a graduating class. And just seeing how the students are dealing with it and taking it in stride is an absolute inspiration, not only to myself, but I know to the entire nation, to the entire world. Nothing really, truly, I, I haven't seen any historical, historical allusions or analogies regarding something like this happening in an educational setting. And it is truly heartwarming to see how everyone is dealing with it. And I am very proud of the class that I'm part of. So I, I thank my peers for speaking up and they, they know they're welcome. So they'll, they'll, they'll speak up whenever they want to.
Thank you, Fisher. Would anyone else like two minutes? If you could raise your hand or if you're on the phone, star nine. Just give it another minute, because I know last week there was someone that came in after. Okay. Let's move on to the points of information. And I know, Dr. Willitt, if you would like to answer some of those graduation questions.
Sure. You know, and I thank, thank you so much, Sonika and Emily and Nathan and Fisher, obviously. And Alexander, we'd heard from you before. You know, there, we, we're heartbroken too. We understand, you know. And I know Ms. Fox was reaching out in a variety of ways and did the survey. I know that she'll continue to be seeking students' input on this. And that our goal is to, to do every single thing we possibly can to get back a sense of normalcy. You know, if, if Governor Lamont somehow dropped all of the social distancing pieces tomorrow when, you know, COVID situation was resolving, we would, we would make every effort to make sure that we had a, a traditional graduation. So to kind of answer the question of, you know, would we consider having a graduation at a later date or in form? Absolutely. You know, I think that the problem is that we don't have a good idea at all of what we are going to get on May 20th. And the only thing that I did see wasn't suggesting that, that we, we as a school system would have too much lifted from the standpoint of what our public gathering prohibitions are. So, but, but if we do, if there is a tiny, you know, tiny crack to squeak through here, we'll squeak through it to try to get the most traditional situation we can. I was talking to Ms. Fox today. I, we, we were going through a series of things, both offered by students and other groups, you know, and whatever, whatever is done, we want to make sure that it feels right to the students. The problem with pushing off a graduation too far out is that, and I hate saying this, I, you believe me, it pains me to say it, but there is a belief that we will have a second wave of COVID-related impact, that the first wave is now, and then there'll be a trough period. And that potentially we would see a resurgence of the virus and need to take additional action. So, you know, if that wave came at a span of time that we had rescheduled something, it could impact that again. So we just have to really look very carefully at what we're going to get from Governor Lamont on May 20th. And we have to put together a series of options that are advised by. And, and obviously, you know, we want to take what the, what you, what you, Emily, Nathan, Fisher, and Sonika, you know, what you want. We want to do that for, for that, for you, for that group. We'll take it into advisement, what you want. And if there's, you know, if, if one of those options is possible, when we find out what our next steps are May 20th, you know, I'm sure Ms. Fox will be all over that. So, and I would support that too. So we just have to see where they're going to be. We'll set up all of our options and then see which one of those options will work once we get the next set of state's directives. But we hear you and we care about you. You know, we want to make this a special time in every way we can. And we're, we're committed to doing that, no matter what it takes. So.
Thank you, Dr. Willitt. Let's go to Jacob?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything Dr. Willitt said. A lot of stuff, as you all pointed out, when you came up and spoke, is correct that we, a lot of it is up to the governor and not up to us as to what we can and cannot do. But if, if at all possible, we will try to do something to honor or regret, well, we will do something to honor the class of 2020 and hopefully have it be close to normal. And anything that the board can do to help make that happen within the constraints that we're working in, I'm sure the, the board would join me and Dr. Willitt in, in doing that.
Thank you, Jacob. Christine? Griffin?
I just wanted to say, you know, thank the seniors for, you know, speaking tonight. I know a couple of you personally, and I know that you guys are hurting. Do you guys know I have a senior myself? So, you know, this is really an emotional time. And I know that Dr. Willitt and anything that any of us can do, we're going to do everything that we can to make sure you guys get the graduation you deserve. So just stay positive, stay as happy and sane as you can, but just know that we're not giving up on this. And, you know, as soon as we get more information from the governor, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can. So hang in there, guys.
Thank you, Griffin. Karen?
Yeah, ditto for me. Also, another senior mom on the board that's living this with my child. And I just want to thank the seniors for popping in in the meeting tonight and, and speaking. I'm extremely, extremely proud of all of you for sticking through this. And I think you will come through this, whatever happens, with great resilience. And congratulations, Nathan, our valedictorian. And keep the faith. We're going to do everything we possibly can. And hang in there. We're all trying to hang in there.
Perfect. I think that's everyone. I don't want to extend our meeting here because we're pushing that 10 o'clock limit. So if we could, anything about the future? Do you want to discuss anything, Dr. Willitt?
I think we're, I think it's self-explanatory. And as soon as we can get to that, we will.
Perfect. Business. I think we're all set.
Can we just make sure to have on our next meeting agenda the, talk about May, like a break for the teachers and kids? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Jacob, Mari, second that.
I can't make the motion, Jacob.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. Jacob, Mari, I'll move that we adjourn the movie, I mean, the, the meeting. I'm tired.
Christina Plord, second.
Karen?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dana? She says aye. Kate?
Aye.
Think I got everybody? Myself?
All right, aye. I didn't realize I was muted.
Perfect.
Lord, aye.
Perfect. I've adjourned.
All right.
Bye, guys.
Bye-bye. Take care.